Siliisa kiyew, baran kaunor yekidru isaklimaum. Oruan wood, wiyaraan kasiluun uyakbur toror wood. Tayrenka gan katlam ootai lakteban katiam manan lowlowon ritungatai ban wiliyantaiti obegitaran wanparon net, enka wiliyantaitio lowlow, andutungata.
Kaykeden uyakiyew, osakireni la. Kamailan kaborei banbatowan, san san. Mayinko, tsamatkaol levalo. Kapunggiyongir, arketunkalemetonwey, and filikta tapusenkagan wule wiliyanir, and safilmar winin kokusenek tisakir. Saran wood, wiyaraan kasilu, and wiyatoror tisakwalir. Monat banbatowantola, man wiliyantitio uyath ngal sakarmisilang. Rankatuninlangiala, at ngal suutarakan. Kawawyalo, kasarawyalan wongyan anagunaman kit. Oau tekinikundate safilmarni sarawya. Wani sarawyan, kawitkit, kamarenikit, nananikit. Wongy nysarawyan, kawitkit, kamarainikit, nanan, tan katii. Katskatii, rireakan, dan mawon, safilmar wey otowak. Milimeta yingiro, kapetakpar tiyo sakaratanon, patowan wulian kit.
Dapangy ndeganet. Senator Henry C. Wilson. Senator Benjamin H. Ludwig.
Mr. Mike.
Senator Macari Michael.
Mr. George.
Senator Sheldon T. Net.
Mr. Mike.
Senator Norbert A. Perez.
Mr. Mike.
Senator Junicio E. Simon.
Mr. Mike.
Senator Licaro A. Simina.
Mr. Mike.
Senator Francisco Sinram.
Mr. James Speaker.
Mr. Paul Mr. Speaker.
Kalangan, sansal muktae sabulman tu korom, muktae kakadlanan wuyakbur amowot. Aykubro bingka wulian taitio wuya, sabulmatay sakaratan kapung, melil sakaran misiko kapung lap, pangkubran anylap. Keipuni yo waola, pangkubran rakshoko, waola, pangkubran isoko. Waonki sabulmar lukantko, nalalangko, nankonieko. Awtororong labalap, Kate Paliantiak, Momotsuk government, national, state, local, waonki kabina, and bonbe, honorable Stephen Sanchosef. Karion kabina, honorable Aralin Mobic. Waonki xongkubong labalap, honorable Donald Sanchosef, woyang omui xongkubong kan koros. Waonki vice speaker, honorable Michael, waonki floor leader, honorable Abram, oh honorable senator kan koros. Milmentonase, waonki langlang samurokan, olisokan, serisokan. Sumasakan olenglangan way kasongkolkan, koros nan Caleri, and bonbe, koros nan Chamberwood, nan kaalal, maslikan kaalal. Raket, oimental train, wining kokosinat kesake, and ewpene, nan wuyak lamalam, and ranwot, wiban bonase sommatay floor leader, and kakalwet train. Kalangan kumayin speaker, wuni ban yang kacoy jual sakaratan, kapung keipuni waon, kakpatyang, lapwebo makongciang kier. Nan weewe, wesaksit, wangkun kumui, speaker, wangke vice speaker, wangke kanbokai, senator kan koros. Yipil jualanggo waon, irail, stavkan mepatyang jail menseng ranwot, nan Caleri. Speaker ipatyang kumui, bonusya, ramau kapung, wong tonpeyu, meliralkan meppian man kabesakan. Speaker waon man, patowon teki, wukamogit, motkesembolwojengka, kapantela, ebol ben sapmajal channel.
Sariyaman.
Tanjal, kumogit memiya, taylang kapantela, sabulmatay, watawatan channel, koros moukung kumogit amasaniyei. Oh, amasani show, kumogit paita, tay kapantela, sabulmatay, watawato alaltan channel, kumut floor leader. Kalangan speaker man pagita, amijjual waon ban, and kakpatpatjowze. Oh, asukset, man blow sakare pramailo, teki challenge suspend order of business, chorakati apali 60 walu.
Sariyaman.
Tanjal, kawitin floor leader, taylen katian 60 wa walu, ason kat kilo, kumutang koselnetkan, or resolutionkan. Senator Net, Senator Koros, maawor, ay ban blow bonase floor leader. Kalangan speaker waon, wibliw sakare motkesembolwoj, tak kumui floor leader. Wibliw teki challenge suspend order of business, oh chorakta ban, order of the day apali standing country report. Tanjal amau, kawitin care leader, tak kumogitin care leader, taylen katian ban order of the day, yes standing country report. Weki amia utrun kumogitwo, kaykatiat, ban order of the day, yes standing country report, ay ban bonase chief clerk.
Standing country report, number reapiri isakslulay, isakmal, meted, legislature, bill number 33 isakmalay, isakmal, dan public opinion finance.
And bonase committee in finance, melil chairman in finance, Senator Carl.
Kalangan may mister speaker, wuni ban patas somkametin moni. Angakpatyang, same masaninkosong sakaratan kabek, kapung keipuni waon mepatoya minlan. Itungalwaola, bangkubrumui, wangke melil, itungal vice speaker, itungal wangke floor leader, itungal waotororong, isanalay moos, senatoretkar. Itungal waon, riya, honorable senator kan koros, milman waonki irail, tamatai stav mepatyang kay. May mister speaker, waon karaerak, ipatas somkametin moni, oh kumogit molwoj, taylen kak wuyakburki, standing country report. Weyopri isak silu, laban ya resaklimaw.
Sariyaman.
Tanjal, kumogitin chairman Carl, koros moukung kumogit amasaniyei, oh amasani show, kumogit paita, ye amasani be.
Kalangan may mister speaker, itungal waosabal bangkubrumui, oh bangkubrakan koros. Standing country report, weyopri isak silu, laban ya resaklimaw. Itan kumutang koselnet silubuki, isaklimaw, laban ya resaklimaw. Me, teki teki, one moni, momalwat kamanatangar, kemban kamarain. Luon moni memiya, angak reprogramde, kanene tiyang anan kan meritungalenki. Wewi kupukuburawat may mister speaker. Songon moni bukat, weki wuyamoin kampak, masudugin totong, totong lalalumunbar, agin kaburupurlawa saaki. Oh, wuyapenatai ban, lew, ang pakidalen totong, mebil wypan. Ari, asomau, mia ban kubrakan, intuan kawit, mia nan kumutang koselnet, or report mekawit. One moni, meluwet yen nenep, nu momwet. Keiu, one moniwan patosangnan, moni momalwat kamanatarong, personnel. Oh kanene tiyang palisilu, melil keiu, ananin selak, kasembolin kaya no, meetingkan, mepalwoj ban patyang. Patpanuwet, nuwetala silinen bakit, babukie isak payu. Oh patyang met, aladois maginapali, anan kan, me, kempa, kan ginlabulman kia melil, kemban kamarain, wundala milyaneu. Point one oh sama, angakpatolang, nan, onombent totok, ban aladois, meban yang agebarin skuru yekitri isaklimaw, or yekitri isakono. Oh wun kawon sak, kawit masansan nan report may mister speaker, wundala nen limakit, angakpatola. Oh patoti yang ban, patitin maintenance and kemban kamarain, weki anan karwaru memiya, oh skulin pakin sayu. Me report pe mia yarsang senator adhwi, nan keiu ran samatai session tororwot, intuan ewparaker, pakino, katetetong. Malwet me umbulaud mia ni skulu, ni aso mekasubulwi wuyawu mepatyang. Irail, terin skulkan, sombatangkan benenei, bill son kavalin imbu yo ni, arail, kotowa moradiyo. Ale, ale yang, eh, oh sairata, sonamawon kasubunma wuyawu ran. Terwewi, irawat noon karwaru, kameti, kawit molwet, kupurmawon mio, kamanatawon dalan nen limakit. Opsu school, tak kemban kamarain, angak totongkio, sabulmarail, darait ngol ton totong, kanen pisertila pakin, patowan tila tipso mananabemiya. Oh wuyakita sang, olabukat, oh skulin pakain, niyarala may mister speaker, i totok mesamkametin moni. Melil kawitin honorable Senator Koros, ewgubeno, sansal nan reportwet may mister speaker, kalangan.
Kalangan, NKPSite kawopen report, song chairman Carl, wiyatre amasani ken report.
Speaker.
Speaker. Kumi senator adhwin.
Kalangan speaker ei puluwaon, patapata, patay masalung sakaratan waon menyeir. Onken kumi, vice, floor honorable memberkan. Wiraikan meyang patyang kay, menseng ranwot, nancheenterwet, oh masliku.
Oh mister speaker, i kapungki, report mansansal, mwenne, sansal mau, me, onei kai mepeita, mekita isongsongen. Realekeit, wunka, totoke, wasake, me, anan.
Moin wasakis, meimin, moin sair.
Iyam patyang kametin nan korongrongo, iraiti, ikasalayta weki, eh, mwenne bilkasemboleng tayl, taylen, tuon wewoki. Magitay ban, melil ban personnel, magitay ban, ale moni kai mepeita ban personnel, tayl, ilkalautaikila. Woinan irailkan me meet criteria, eh, melil long form kan irail. Ale ti credit kan mekonyang borankak, ale ti kalautlan kuikui. Oh wasami i patowon raise me, magitay ban ale moni bukat, tayl, tapunki bill, woinan salary, asawat, apkolkolte. Yau kuikui kai mekita il, eh, ong position kai me, yau air feiken, tay irailkan, eh, konmaldisanan puko. Anan par kabet, magitay ban bilkolkolte position puko, ah, wewoki tay kalak, ban kalautela, eh, patitin personnel. Ari, moi ipatowant, oh, moi kapungki, director, ime bil, eh, ikasalayang kanti, me, eh, rebamburlaw, lew, tryaksa bali. Personnel in education, oh songen, kilang positionkan me, ban kak, taylen eliminate sangnan, nan budget, taylen utan wewoki, tamini. Tayl, moin payawu, weki, education ewpali me, eh, turnover, irail ton totongkan laut. Oh, tamisairki rew, puma utan positionkan koros ban outauta. Akitay lap, sairtar, ale tabin moni puko, tayl, kalautaikila, woinan ton toto. Kamda nu fiscal year, kaydu moni kap mekita kalautaikila, tay ale moni kai mepeita, tayl kalautaikila. Ari, moi ipatowantata, me, weki, eh, ma, eh, wuyapen budget nan fiscal yearet, tay surban, eh, tryakmau. Ah, utan tayban nananor bakita source me, ban kalautaikila, patitin personnel. Surpatowan asawat ma personnel, eh, ban kampak kap, mia cap nan salary. Ah, yeu concern me ipatowan wo, kamelele me, eh, melil oaiyanki me. The more we put into personnel, the less we have in, eh, ong tipso kan, tay iraitaikan me ban, eh, sewaseita bali in education. Ari, in the past, moni mekinpeita kan, imekin tokai, one time purchases ban, eh, department kaimani. Ari, tamimi asawat, moi ipatowantata, me, weki, eh, i utrun kalautla bukat, weki iraisa matangkan, deserve, me, melil, meet all the criteria. Ikasalayata, for, eh, ong tayl, me tanapali budget, me, ime ban wuyawi, ah, taylen kasik, me, eh, ma vacancy kai. Koros ban outauta, then we'll have to find new sources for ban kalautaikila budget, kalangan. Kalangan senator adhwin maaworla, and bonasima, Senator Simina, chairman and kamarain.
Kalangan speaker, moneban patro, aydual sakaratan waon kapung, wang samatayin koot. Aydual sakaratan waon, patyang isabolmumi, wang ciankina isang ranwot. Kabretow sakset, wangkun kumui, vice speaker, floor leader, another members koros yen. Angak, eh, kawit, ira katian concerns sang senator, eh, honorable adhwin. Sansal nan korongrongo me, eh, director kasalayta, concern me fit, concern me, honorable adhwin kasalaytao me. Rebamburalang management, oh ebol ben long form, and emiya program kai me, management bein patowan me, eyzolananabe. Isangni ira puko, ban kakapali yang iron concern me, sansal sang, eh, senator adhwin. Nan rebambroto, patiden, tuon isik, ya, director banak ju justify, oh, yam munebolben songon concern tuwetin, kalangan speaker.
Maawor, Senator Simina, ma kubrim bonasima, Senator Simon.
Kalangan kumayin speaker, speaker akomputin kupuropu, kak, patrog sabulmumi, nasenin. Kipuniwamisalay, sir. Saksiredi one wawan, korom, olubi, bili bili bisip. Ngrapusel dergan koros, oh, irailkan mepatongtay. Speaker man kapungki totog, kasilen mekanti finance, aim sakaratan. Wasakeis meimin, kalalabar, ya kawit menyesang director education. Nan patitin parit, ipatwang kamelele me, kapi ting finance, pil kawitlong, kempakan, nan government wuin bonbe. Angak trok real ton totongkai me, sapiskier sabaryisak tenautsa. Ari, ipatwang kasik bemway, mia, memya dang kempa in education. Ari ya ipatpatwang, kalautlan, eh, ebol ben long form, utani kapunggiyang committee. Asaw reyrey, real supetankan purupur regulation, eh, pil kilo parak, amanaman, teki wulian kubrakan, wet ilong form. Am, asawat, tray kretan asombung in august, september fiscal yearet banak. Mia, ton totog, and department takim ban kamarain, me, totogir, samparisak tenautsa, trotro. Asawatam kitay ban, kadinapali wut, sombongewlu. Kamui kasalita irawat, be, menele, mia masenpa, perkestoyang korongrongani, stupatuwana, na, jamalu komitakawit, stakparan gile. Kalangan kumui speaker.
Ya ma kubrim bonasima, chairman and moni, chairman Carl.
Kalangan may mister speaker, weki, rebambroting jualanki asomau, patas somkametin moni. Kapungki, kawit ma memiya, melil keiu sang senator adhwin, oh mebit, kabarak penabolben, woinan samatangkan, or ananin moni. Banapali, tutung school, oh, anantrikan, me, kemban kamarain, ginjualanki. Oh, patitin kemban kamarain. Weki, kosandi, mapali, koselnet mekamanamanta, kawitpe, surte sangaj, malwet. Kinsurte sangaj eksekutiv. Kawitke, kawitpa ginmia sang jamko, taliu mekin kamanado, kawit wuyapen totog lahan moning kampak. Ari, weki kawitin jamko, kosanedi, ebol ben ton totog, in kemban kamarain, me kuikui pa, kuikui sang ban moning kampak. Wuxang, ton totogkan me, ebol ban, samatai turnout ban.
Wuxang ton tetogkan me abul ban samatai turnal kwan. Imakarata me ya long form. Imakarata me ya eh step increase masumbatagilal. Sumbarisak sabiski. O sangen benefit keira bil kak padawan bonus nimun pa. Wasame. Bil kasambal routsode dugalanki leave tuwajte ton tetogtekan. Weki jamko kasambalki running school nan pare wa classroom. Service schoolkan engak patuwan ranobukwali sekayan. Ele yang nan summer iraisa sumbatangkan ma nanan. Ale di arait dugal tikrit sangan kayantekan ayan sumaragin dugalan ki ansumao. Wiraipete. Mesud ananane sudu bil ananepadola. Nan kilang school abraman pibete. Teri. Abul tororowat. Kamabem me ya. Kau be bil me ya ranwot g trail sobai. Dadawan iraisa sumbatangkan mekin sumawata. O ananakomalsang. Tetog sipilawan ran me leave kan me ya ong nan. Tien ansum school mugmogit. Pateng met kosanti long form. Awiala ruwasin kosenet. Teri me sumbatag men ma lele qualification puko. U dan rabanalu kui kui kap. Ni songan momta. Me bil sudu moning kompak g trail tabun requirementin kosenet. I kapungki kawitin budgetin parawat weki. Nan parin mowe. Moi weki adailapre. Kadying tekakadang nan tien kompak kap. Nan songan sombong me duwademe. Ketaikati kati milian bayu samo ban kupurbulaw. Trail sudhe eh sabul man ki ansumao daden kosenetu monowo. Monowo kupurbulaw. Nan parin tetogwet miliane usamo wet. Kosenet we wuya wuya romaban santime ban tetog. Kupuren Senator Simon i kapungki. Weki. Nan. Kadamen ma me me ya. Ong sumbarisak ni ansho me budgetkin kotog. Ah esensal me sumbatag men me. Lel sumbarisak nan chanwrio. Abse kalupui kui. Me budgete ban amende tuwak kasaleta ban. Puralo lel ran me eh dugal sabiski lel sumbarisak. Teri tetogosudugin salongala. Imen kamelil me kawitin Senator Simon. Ban wiyabil men kawit samatai kemban kamarain. Engak eh. Kongong wodenkak me ya ong irael. Wiraikawit seiraelkan me lel nanparwet. Sabiski pukuan sumbatag sumbarisak wek engak kebuljen nan budget. Imen kamelil me kupurawa yang sansal nan. Palikayuwen patria ong report. Aida reportwo ni entingta maralap. We patawan me duwan moni bukat banapali. Anan kan me wonon weki long form. Teri. Ele eh entingta reportwo maralap. Imen kamelil me yangaki kawit waw. Weki kupuren Senator Simon ai ban. Begita jalengak kedlamo trail ai banewong chairmanin. Kamiti kamarain ogite wong direkturin kemban kamarain. Wen kak kadetet. Ma iraelkan me lel sumbarisak nanparwet. Yang patpatunang kawitwet. Imen kapuraborke marayang. Teri maine Mister Speaker. Ong abulben. Irail ton tetogin kemban kamarain. Me ya utetog mugmogit nan kamiti eh kamarain. Me banapali iraikan mebit etali. O songan benefittekan me. Eki bakemao. Apni ansho maralay yang kau palak. Abul parael wuxangadon tetogtekan be. Li bukat ida wuasab ida sumarakat tetong kenai summer. Teri men begita tetogwo. Weki e patpatunang eh kamiti kemban kamarain na. Kilangka gitarkeila tamimiye. But o apali atasang ananin moni bukat. Kalangan maine Mister Speaker.
Kalangan Chairman. Karl, komui. Chairman Janco, Senator Perez.
Kalangan komui Mister Speaker. Monai ban yang patuwan aitong. O report mesansal mota leimen pateng komui. Ong sabul momu sakratan. Wawgan met jengel ongkeng komui. Ongkeng vice floor o yangai honorable members korus. Iraikan me yang patutetnan kalurang. Speaker. Eh. Yang kamiti. Itse itongal teitakiu me me ya. Amonai ban tongal tongal ngipitek weta. Imen kapatai report me. I kapungai irael aramaskan me tetekaita yang irael mau. Nan palin kamarain. Weki ira bil patuwoner du maangir. Ni irael ban parburunan kemba wet. Ya consequence ong irael ma mau. I patawan me karek trail maangit patuwon. I patawan. Yang utungta ira bukat weki kasambal nan aramasku kat. Me tetekaidi yang irael mau nan palin kamarain. Itse itongal imen kalalabaktrain dugal chairman maow. Sansal nan iraikan me. Palikarya wey ryaw silu bayu mia maun. Anan irae ewtume siramaw. Imen kalalabaktema ye yamelil twenty four thousand one hundred twenty seven. Banapali personnel. But itse item wot Mister Ramaw. Patut yen itse patuwon me. Eh the proposed amount would accommodate the pending long form application. Anan bagan abin patuwon one morning. O tamabanapali.
Esensal me ya page, me ya paragraph.
Palikya. O item nanbe.
Ana ma mawara ipan ponasima Chairman and Moni, Senator Perez.
Kalangan maine Mister Speaker. Aitongal Chairman and Janco, Senator Perez weki. Keinamuen kawit ma me sabulmaniki. Ong ira keyu mesansal nan report. Abulben long form. Itin men kapungki. Eh yang utungta reportwat. Weki. Ong tetogwo. Amaun desute sansal. Ah amaun desansal me ya kanenet yang. Irail ton tetongkan. O awia attachment ong report. Last in page in komodang kosenet. Esensal eh irait ton tetongkan Corrus. One kui kui mere alalemet. One kui kui kap mereban wut. Ale ni malwot e ban kamana taka komodang kosenet wut. Teri. Imen kamelil me. Kawitwet panichar. Jalengak kedlamo trail po nembe kan mesan. Ite weki wiyaben tetog. Etaban me ya. Ugedaklanan eh. Ya kabat me me ya ong irael ton tetongkan. Ama abaans. G trail katarabui last in page. Asansal ya one morning. Patpatunu wandala rielop. Eh silinandui sekrio.
Kalangan Chairman Karl.
Tongal do follow up.
Kalangan.
Kalangan. Bil pitch i rew. Esansal mo eh. Itongal sawaw. Imen pitangkitan me. Irail bil ton tetog na novis pan yang ale long form. We i patuwonrong eh kak sabung. Irail sumbatangkan megin teach. And classroom entaidalan long form. Akaite ton tetog in education form.
Kamiti determan kak sewasekalalapak sang Senator Perez.
Kalangan maine Mister Speaker. Aban esensal ni men kabesem me wuya men kabatabat ong report. Ong iraikan me eh ban patuwan isais bukat. O esensal me sumbatag. School merebataya. O ya arait dugal available arait dugal salary. Teri mesansal nan men kabatabat me pateng. I patuwan me sumbatag chor nu bukat. Akaident ton tetog na novis. Ah itongal pepe. Ale moen policy kuesti. Kuestenium ong kabinao kemban kamarain. Bo me ya bak irait ton tetog na novis kan biligin yang sewase iraisa sumbatangkan ma. Sudusumbatag. Obak troto. Iraisamadangkan me biligin kaket wiala ton tetog na novis. Teri ray ma qualify re nyang sumbatag. Wya sumbatag nan preschool nyang sumisukusumbatag. Ah i kamelil me konen wenkagi yang eh. Eligible long kosantema pali long form. Ite tam esansal nan men kabesewo di raikoro sumbatag. Ama. Me ya ton tetog na novis me. Itongal. Kaali kupurakuura eneketin kawit. Ong tam me ya sumbatag chor me. Kalangan.
Kalangan Chairman Karl. Sansaler kaweweme me ya. Mesumbatag chor me. Me ya nan report me ni anshowat. Komui.
Reyaman.
Masilar, masenepen standing komitro report riapriysek silu le me ya riysek limao. Sansal me me ya komogiti udaranutungiti masenep. Weki me ya karyamanpen komogito ipan ponese. Corrus mau tung komogito. Masani yi yi. Uong masaniso komogit puitak derutungtiar. Masenep. Corrus mau tung. Reportwat masani yi yi. Uong masaniso komogit puitaro. Trail kamanala standing komitro report number riapriysek silu le me ya riysek limao. Sangsametay kamitien moni. Me ya report chief. Masilar ipan ponese floor leader, apram.
Ay tongal sakratan waw sabal speaker. Imen komogit jalengak choraktiyo apali unfinished business. Komogit me ya jalentoraktiyo po nembe isak silu yey unfinished business. Weki me ya komogito me ya karyamanpen komogito kaket katier po nembe isak silu. O ipan ponese chiefler.
Legislature bill number riapriyeki by sekitulay riysek limao. Legislature draft one of the for not. Adingal new term nineteen eight to the Bombay Code. Relating to occupational safety and for other purposes. Ong ni karyawken sekalongtawat.
Imen ponese Chairman and Kamarain. The Chairman and Rosonmao, Senator Ned.
Kalangan komui main speaker. Monai ban patuwan tolaw pata sakul moma kamitien Rosonmao. Agam kupuramoyen pateng komui. Ki itongal sakarmisiglang waw. Ong anilap. Nan wasan wyalamalam itongal sakaran wawgil komui. Honorable Vice Speaker, Low Leader, Honorable Senators Corrus. Waon ki iraelkan me patunang kalery. Abne melil Vice Speaker, Polonia Town. Oh June. No ya stab attorney. Kemban Roson eh kamitien Rosonmao yang nising sana mauti. Eh lewaw men patuwan wya tak komogit. G trailen. Kadying nan wyalamalamen komodang kosenet number riapriyeki by sekitu. Le me ya riysek limao LD one. Ong nen karyaw o kemseklan watawat.
Karyaman. Sansalmao komogitsang Chairman and Rosonmao. Corrus mau tung komogito masani yi yi. Uong masaniso komogit puitak g trail nan masenep.
Point of information maine speaker.
Komui, Senator Karl.
Itongal wasa bal ban kupuramoyo ban kupurakan Corrus. Men patuwantekawit sang. Samatai chiefler weki yayo. Motion you me. Karyamanpe me ya. Saik ruling akteil ran mulet. Motion in file. Teri niya tai ban. Kadiri wot. Ranwot. Sawasak tai ban jepsangye. Kalangan maine Mister Speaker.
Speaker, speaker. Kaga bali.
Na tai konmalma. Makup.
Vice Speaker, I want to say that we have a floor leader. The speaker is the one who is speaking. The speaker is the one who is speaking. He 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 is the one who is speaking.
Yes, sir. The Speaker has a floor leader. I want to say that he is the one who is speaking. He is the one who is speaking. The committee meeting is important. The Speaker. The Speaker.
The Speaker. The committee on finance, the post on government, the post on government. The posts on government are empty. The need is to have a government. I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government is important.
The chairman of the committee on government is important. The people who are in the committee are important. Do you think the chairman and environment?
Yes, I do. The vice floor members of the committee on government are important. They are the ones who are important. The vice speaker is the one who is important. The speaker is the one who is important. The environment or climate relations committee is important. The chairman of the committee is important. The floor motion 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 is important.
The chairman of the committee on climate and environment, climate relations committee is important. The government is important. The vice chairman of the committee on climate and environment is important. Do you think the chairman of education?
Yes, I do. The members of the committee on education have sent an email to me. I will send it to them next week. The vice chairman of the committee on climate and environment is important. The vice chairman of the committee on climate and environment is important. Yes, sir.
The chairman of the committee on government. The member who reports the events is important. The vice chairman of the committee on climate and environment is important.
Yes, I do. I want to say that the vice chairman of the committee on climate and environment is important. The vice floor president of the committee on climate and environment is important. The speaker is the one who is important. Yes, sir.
The chairman of the committee on climate and environment, the committee on climate and environment, the committee on climate and environment. Do you think the chairman of the committee on government?
Yes, I do. I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government is important. Have a nice weekend, no hard feelings. The vice chairman of the committee on government is important. The vice chairman of the committee on government is important. The chairman of the committee on government is important. The chairman of the committee on government is important. The chairman of the committee on government is important. The chairman of the committee on government is important.
Yes, sir.
Do you think the chairman of the committee on government? I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government has an email address. The chairman of the committee on government has an email address. The chairman of the committee on government has an email address. The chairman of the committee on government has an email address. The chairman of the committee on government has an email address. The chairman of the committee on government has an email address.
Yes, I do. Do you think the chairman of the committee on government?
Yes, I do. I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government is important. I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government is important.
Yes, I do. Do you think the chairman of the committee on government?
Yes, I do. I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government is important. I want to say that the vice chairman of the committee on government has an email address. I want to say that the vice chairman of the committee on government is important. Yes, I do.
The chairman of the committee on government, the senator Edward, the vice chairman of the committee on government, the vice chairman of the committee on government. Do you think the chairman of the committee on government? I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government has an email address. The chairman of the committee on government has an email address. The chairman of the committee on government has an email address. The chairman of the committee on government has an email address. The chairman of the committee on government has an email address. The chairman of the committee on government has an email address. I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government is important. The chairman of the committee on government is important. The chairman of the committee on government is important. The chairman of the committee on government is important. September 11th. I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government is important. I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government is important. The vice chairman of the committee on government, the chairman of the committee on government, the chairman of the committee on government. The chairman of the committee on government is important. The chairman of the committee on government is important. I want to say that the chairman of the committee on government is important. The committee on government is important.